I'd like to call the February 3rd, 2015 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
More.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first person on the list, public invited to be heard is Leo Bowhacker.
It's not Bowhacker.
So, is there a time limit here, three minutes, something like that?
Yeah, three minutes, and then we just need your address.
833 Baker Street, 80501, that's Mr. Bagley's jurisdiction, I believe. So, just a few questions. My first question is that, in having questions in regards to the city budget, salary personnel, the number of city employees, would I, should I expect any type of retaliation from city, county, or any type of governmental official? That's my first question.
Well, yeah, this is not a public forum, you can just talk, but we don't interact. I mean, maybe staff can.
Okay, so you're saying I can't, I'm not permitted to ask questions, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you can state your questions, but we're not, you know, at liberty to interact during this time period.
Okay, so should I expect a response for my questions at some point?
Yes, for me.
Okay, so that's my first question, and that is, in asking questions about the city budget, compensation of salary employees, number of employees, the growth of salaries, the growth of the city budget, should I expect any type of retaliation from the city, or any type of governmental official? Question number one, okay? Question number two is, when is the election for the city attorney? When is that election? Question number two. Am I confusing you, Mayor Coombs, I'm sorry?
No, 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 we're fine.
You know, when I was in school, I was always told that it's good to ask questions.
Very good.
Would you agree with that, sir?
Sir.
Okay, great, so I got an answer, excellent. The third question would be, what is the city attorney's salary? And over the past 10 years, how much has it grown from year to year? Question number four. Okay? Question number five, what is the Human Resources Director's salary currently? And what is, has it been its annual rate of increase on a year-to-year basis? Question number six, how many currently, how many city employees are there currently? And what has been the rate of growth for the city employees, as well as the Human Resources Budget, over the past 10 years? Question eight.
We're about seven.
Oh, seven? Okay.
I got it.
Sorry. Okay, great. Not drinking beers tonight, just asking questions. Okay, so, number seven is, may I have this information presented in graphically or in a spreadsheet, for example, Excel format, for easily understand, so I can easily understand it? Those are my questions for tonight. Mr. Bagley, when should I expect a response?
I'll do the chat with you in a sec.
Okay, well, you know, I prefer if you have my mailing address. If you could maybe address those to me in writing, would that be okay, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I really don't have time tonight, Mr. Bagley. I might prefer to be addressed in, by, in writing, to my, to my home mailing address, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and I reserve the right to come back again and ask questions in the future. Thank you.
Fred Kirsch, do you want to answer one of the questions? Or no, let's take it off one. Fred Kirsch?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Fred Kirsch, I live up in Fort Collins, but I am here tonight representing Community for Sustainable Energy and the 1,140 Longmont residents who signed a petition in favor of bringing community solar gardens here to Longmont. And so I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about community solar gardens and what we found out in the community and our canvassing. We're a grassroots organization. What we do is research local energy issues and raise public awareness of energy issues and organize support for sustainable energy policies and practices. And we really fell in love with community solar gardens. They started back in 2010 up in Carbondale, outside of Carbondale, in Elgabelle, I think is where the first one was. Company Clean Energy Collective started it. And what they figured out was a model of how to take rooftop solar and put it all in one location to get economies of scale and to really package all of the government incentives and rebates to create the most accessible and affordable solar, cost-effective solar option that really we've seen available today. And now there are something like 50 communities around Colorado, and they were expanding into other states as well, that have community solar gardens, including the Prudential Valley Rural Electric Association, which, in case anyone doesn't know, is the utility, it's a co-op for the areas that surround Longmont. And they just did, last week, they just did their grand opening of their second community solar garden, so they're really excited about it. Everybody's excited about it. So, what we did is we knock on doors and ask people, you know, if it's something that they would like to participate in, or if it's something that they think that the city of Longmont should start doing. And a little bit of, some numbers for you. From October 20th to December 7th, we had 1,737 responses, people saying yes or no, whether or not they support it. 1,610 people, as 93% said, yes, they do. As I mentioned, 1,140 people signed the petition, and 424 folks took the time to write a personal letter saying why it is that they support it, and whether or not they would use it themselves. To give you an idea of the scale of that, more importantly than whether or not it represents the entire community, which, you know, you can talk about the statistics whether or not it does, but the, the community solar garden that's being built right now in Fort Collins over a six-month period, they are now 93% sold out, and that's 100 people. 424 people wrote letters saying that they want this in Longmont. So if only the people who wrote letters participated in the program, that would be enough to sell it out. And I think some of the key things to know about community solar garden, from your point of view, is that it's a private enterprise, and this is a relationship between customers and Clean Energy Collective, who does the community solar gardens. And what the, what the city does, what the utility does, is very similar to what's done with rooftop solar right now, which is, you connect the solar to the grid, and then you credit the bills for the people who own the solar panels. So I see now that my time has run out, and that's just about all I have to say. So, oh, one question real quick. I have other contact information for people, it's about 800 names, so if you can tell me who to send that to, that way it'll be easier.
At the end, yeah, all your information. And could you could also include the questions you asked in your survey?
Yeah, I'll do that here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak, public invited to be heard? Okay. Okay, so now it's time for a special presentation, so. Go ahead, Valerie.
As soon as our recipient gets. Mayor Coombs and members of council, my name is Valerie Skid, I'm a city clerk, and it's my honor to, to present this tonight. Dawn Kitana, our deputy city clerk, was recently informed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks that she had received a certified municipal clerk designation. And I just want to talk a little bit about that program, that education program, before you make the presentation to her. As a certified municipal clerk, the program is designed to enhance the job performance of clerks in small and large municipalities, and to prepare the recipients for the challenges of becoming a municipal clerk. They provide them with quality education in partnership with our institutions of higher learning and with the state and national associations of clerks. This program has been helping educate and helping clerks excel since 1970. To earn the CMC designation, a municipal clerk has to extend, attend extensive education programs and have pertinent experience in a municipality. You have to be an active member of the IIMC for at least two years. You have to firm and practice our code of ethics. You have to perform the core duties of a municipal clerk, or if you're a deputy, you have to perform at least four of the eight core duties that they designate for clerks to perform. You have to attain 60 education category points, and a point is not like one class, a point, you get like one point per, per six hours of in-class time of training. So, it takes quite a few hours of in-class training in order to be able to attain those education points. And then you also have to attain 50 points in the experience category. If you, your experience points come just from being a clerk, you get four points for serving each year as an active clerk. So it would take you 12 years just to get those points. However, you can also earn additional points by being active in IIMC as a board member or with your state. In our case, the Colorado Municipal Clerks League, either as a board member or serving on as a chair, teaching classes, or through taking municipal clerk institute classes and advanced classes through the Clerks Institute. So, there's a lot of education that's required. Dawn has been, I think, with the city for eight years, 10 years, eight and a half years. She's been in the clerk's office for five or six years, and, is that right? Yeah, it seems like, I've known her forever. But, so it's taken her five years to get her CMC, it's not something you can get overnight. And just from a personal standpoint, I want to tell you that I've been a clerk for 25 years, and I've had the pleasure of serving with a lot of good deputy clerks, and she is one of the best. So, when I'm ready to retire, you have at least one choice to, that you'll be able to look from within to fill this position, so. And her family is in the audience to share in this tonight, and I think you have a plaque and a pin at your station, mayor, that we would like you to present to Dawn and have a picture taken. So, thank you, Dawn, and congratulations.
Front and center.
She can even go ahead and say what she wanted to.
You want to say?
Yes.
Okay, I guess it's time for the study session item.
Yeah, Mayor Coombs, your item is the Priority-Based Budgeting Update, and Jim Golden and Teresa Malloy are here to make that presentation.
Mayor, members of council, I told Dawn that you all would give her a pop quiz to see if she really got that education.
We're just not smart enough to know what questions to ask.
I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. Tonight, we're doing a Priority-Based Budgeting Update, and as you know, we, we first started utilizing priority-based budgeting in 2010. We did it on a limited basis, and last year, in 2014, when you were all involved, we did a comprehensive effort to fully implement a priority-based budgeting concepts. And we also didn't, also secured the, we used the consultants for priority-based budgeting and secured their tools that they produce, in particular, their, their resource alignment diagnostic tool. So, you yourselves had an opportunity to see that, those results and those, that tool at your council retreat last June. During 2014, all of the city's programs were identified and costed, and they were scored in the priority-based budgeting process. And then we did enter those, those programs and scores into the, to the RAD tool last summer. During August, we shared some information with the city council related to summary data on that, on those results, but we really did not utilize that too much in the 2014 budget process. And what we did discuss in September during the budget process is that we wanted to try to bring that back to you in more detail, so that we could analyze program information. And we want to, what we want to do now is begin to look at them against each of the individual attributes and results that they are measured against. So, now, beginning tonight, we're, our attempt to try to, to begin to bring that to you periodically. So, we would want to try to do this leading up to the 2016 budget process. You're on the last slide there. So, so anyway, so I'm going to begin with a quick overview of the Priority-Based Budgeting Concepts. First, we evaluate all the city programs against the desired results of the council and the cities, and the key program attributes. So, third, next slide, okay? So, sorry, what? I can't help you with that. Hopefully, we'll get that back in a minute. In the meantime, we do have the slides up here on the, on the sides. So, the desired results for community programs, those were as identified by the city council towards the end of 2013 and early 2014. There were four desired results identified. They're shown here on this slide, and in the order of priority as, as the community did weight them in a process that we did last spring. Vibrant amenities and opportunities for all was 28.7% weighting. Safe community is 26.4%. Reliable, innovative, and resilient infrastructure at 25%, and a thriving economic climate at just short of 20%. So, in addition, we also had five desired results that were identified for governance programs. So the, the four that I just referred to were for community-oriented programs, and we did, we do split the programs into both areas. Governance programs are those that are internal services supporting the rest of the organization. The desired results there were to ensure timely, responsive, and efficient operations, supporting city operations to be their best, provide clear, inclusive, transparent leadership and collaboration, and develop and maintain strong partnerships, follow local, state, and federal rules, regulations, and mandates, protect, invest, and value the city's human and physical capital, prudently manage and responsibly leverage public funds. So the governance programs are measured against those five desired results, and in the community-oriented programs are measured against the original four. the community-oriented programs are measured against the original four results, the desired results that I went over. Now, all of them are measured against these four attributes. And the attributes are part of, these are identified by the priority-based budgeting consultants, it's part of the whole concept and approach, so these are not mandate, these are not attributes that we've identified, but the ones that we utilize. The first is the mandate to provide the program. Second is reliance on the city to provide the program. Third's cost recovery of the program, and then finally, the portion of the community that is served by the program. So when we identified all of our programs last year, we came up with a citywide total of 1,244 programs. And of that amount, 527 of those are programs that are in our general fund. So 1,244 is certainly a large number of programs, but you need to realize that programs are broken down to a department and division level. So there's a number of programs that are actually repeated or overlapped in a number of departments, and it's not in the sense that they're all providing the same service, but they are providing a similar service. Yeah, I'm going to take a break here.
No problem.
We saw the HDMI 3 in the corner. My daughter has an app that can actually hook up TVs and turn them off.
What program is this? That's sure, I'm sure it is. Just look up. All right, so I'll just resume here on this slide with, as I mentioned, we have 1,244 city programs, 527 in the general fund. The reason why we have so many individual programs is that we do have a number of them that are identified in more than one division and department. They could have different funding sources, so we have a lot of programs in public safety that are repeated in both the general fund and the public safety fund. Or they could also represent the efforts of an individual division and on a common program. And some of those examples would be like on community events, a number of divisions and departments are involved in the provision of community events, and also on our public information efforts. So those are just some of the examples. But as a result, what is identified by our consultants in going through our data, they actually identified 737 distinct programs. So you can get the idea that there's over 500 or so programs that may appear in more than one division or department or with more than one funding source. So then also, what happens is after these programs are all scored, they are then placed in different quartiles based on their respective scores. Quartiles 1 through 4, quartile 1 being the highest scores, down to 4 being the lowest So our updates that we will be bringing you, now understand, we've got, again, we have four attributes, we have four desired results in community-oriented and five more in governance, so that adds up to 13 different attributes or results. We are going to try to do our updates individually to focus on each one of those 13 attributes or results, and how each program, or I'm going to give you data at least, on how each program influences that attribute or result. So I'll just preface it and warn you that it's probably important not to jump to any immediate conclusions based on any one report. I think it's a good idea to begin to see the data, let it kind of continue to be collected. That'll give you, or reported, and to get, that'll give you a complete picture of the impacts of any one program on any of those, well, the four, all the four attributes and the four or five results that are attributed to those programs. So, so we're starting tonight with the mandates attribute. We're going to probably go through the four attributes, the first four that we'll be presenting to you. So tonight's mandates, the different levels of mandates that are used, these are as defined by the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting Consultants. The scoring is from a higher four to a lower zero. A four is a program that's required in writing by federal, state, or county legislation. A score of three is a program required by city charter or other incorporation documents or to comply with regulatory agency standards. A two is a program required by a code, ordinance, resolution, or policy, or to fulfill an executed franchise or contractual agreement. A one is a program recommended by a national professional organization to meet published standards or a best practice. And then finally, a zero is a program where no requirement or mandate exists. So now, don't look at that. But I'm putting that up there as a reference, but if you look at the update that you got in your packet tonight on page four, you will see the same graph or table. It's a chart that is identifying by department how we summarize each of these programs within each department as it relates to these five levels of the mandates. I'm just putting this up here so you know which ones, what I'm referring to in this discussion. We broke down the departments based on our organization structure, so we have some smaller areas in there that are not part of established departments, and so you'll see city attorney, city manager, HR, city clerk, I'm sorry, not city clerk, but city council, and non-departmental.
Councilmember Warrior, we'd like to ask a question.
Just quickly, Jim, what is the yellow and green?
I'll be getting there in just a second, but those are the high, those are the high numbers, so I will identify that here for you. So going from left to right, after the summary analysis, we begin to show the mandate level four, which is again, the federal, state, and county legislation. And so you can see in there that, like, if you pick any of those departments, you'll see where there are programs identified. So starting, let's say, down in finance, there are nine programs that are mandated, and it's for a total of $929,000. So as you go across, what we've highlighted in yellow are, under each column, which of those departments has the highest number of programs underneath that mandate level? And then in green is the highest budget amount in each mandate level. Now, of course, we've got large departments, and so we have some a lot larger than others, and so they are certainly popping up with more programs and more dollars in places like public safety and public works and natural resources. And we do spend an awful lot of money on our purchased power, and so in the second column, the amount that's required by city charter, you'll see power and communications has the most dollars, over $57 million there. So, I thought there was a question, sorry. So just, so I'll highlight some of those numbers. Public safety has the most programs required by federal, state, or county legislation, they have 20. Public works, natural resources, has the most programs required by city charter or other incorporation documents, that's 78 programs. PWNR has the most required by code or ordinance, 167 programs. They also have the most programs recommended by a best practice of published standards with 255 programs. And then community services has the most programs with no requirement or mandate with 46 programs. Now, from the cost of programs perspective, public safety has the highest cost of programs required by federal, state, or county legislation at 3.1 million. And I mentioned power and communications for the city charter requirements at $57 million. Public safety has the highest cost of programs required by code, ordinance, or resolution at 18 million. And public works, natural resources, has the highest cost of programs recommended by best practices and standards at 18.3 million. And then finally, the highest cost of programs with no requirement or mandate is in public safety at 3.7 million. So the general fund, we indicated earlier, the general fund has 527 programs on itself that has make up a budget of $65.4 million. The highlights of the general fund, they're on page five of the update, and I'm going to take you through those, each one of those, but we're going to do that through looking at the RAD tool. So I'm going to ask Teresa to pull up the RAD tool here. And I included in your packet some dashboard views from the RAD tool. Those are, we began first with looking at all 1,244 programs on the citywide level of mandate, and those are on pages 6 through 10 of your communication, but I'm not going to focus on those. We're going to instead look at the general fund programs, and those dashboard views are on pages 11 through 15. So I don't expect you to be able to see these numbers very well on this screen, so you might want to refer to those pages in your packet. But, so what Teresa's done is begun by putting in the highest level of mandate. So what the RAD tool does here, make sure I got the right page myself, yeah. So what the RAD tool's doing is representing those, a total number of programs that we have in that area that are required by federal, state, or county legislation. 37 programs in the general fund at 4.85 million. So I'm going to try to use this pointer here, you'll see down here in the far right column here, it's totaling 37 programs. And then right next to it, to the left, is the, and I lost the pointer. Yeah, no, we, there you go. $4.85 million is the total of those programs. If you look at the graph, it's just showing those dollar amounts as they are applied across the different quartiles. And so this is based on how these programs score and the quartile they fall in. So what you can see then is that in quartile one, and the numbers are down on the bottom again still, and it breaks it out by quartile and budget amount. But for quartile one programs, we have 20 programs, and it's $3.3 million. And you see below that, we have in quartile two, there's 14 programs falling in quartile two at 1.18 million. And then three programs in quartile three at $333,000. So the next, go ahead to the next, well, I'm sorry, I wanted to also point out that down at the bottom of this screen, you can see besides the fact that... Are we looking at the right one? It's got 1,200, you got the general fund in there? I think we probably, we didn't change, all right, the RAD tool's not been adjusted for those, the budget amount at the bottom. So on, within the, within what you're looking at in a council packet, you'll see at the bottom that the total general fund budget is shown at 65.4 million. So this is 7.4% of the total general fund budget. And 7% of the total programs, of the 527 programs, are for the highest level mandate for, by federal, state, or county legislation. So we'll now going to run, you can change it to the next level mandate, which is required by city charter or regulatory agency standards. And in that area, then that's on page 12, it's 57 programs, they're budgeted at $7.1 million total, that's 10.8% of the general fund budget. And then again, you can see now on this graph that they're spread out, most of the dollars are in quartile one or two. It's 4.3 million in quartile one and 2.2 million in quartile two. At 500,000 in quartile three, and $21,000 for two programs in quartile four. These are the type of displays that we can pull out of the RAD tool, and it just gives you the broad sense of where these dollars are allocated. But it's not going to get into any individual program detail itself, which we will talk about here in a few more minutes. So it, you know, it'll give you the general overall impression, but if you have an individual question about a certain program, you're never going to get it off the RAD tool, it's going to be in all the data that's hidden underneath it.
Councilmember Valerie?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I don't want to have any, just so I can follow. So what's accounting, so what's the difference between 11 and 12? What accounts, for example, quartile one going from 3.3 up to 4.3?
So those are the general fund programs. On page 11, they're the general fund programs that have a level four mandate. So they're mandated by federal, state, or county. On page 12, we're now showing you the general fund programs that are required by city charter or regulatory agency standards. But, but the 1, 2, 3, 4 on this screen is telling you what quartile they fall in for their overall program score. So looking at them as a total against all eight or nine attributes and desired results, where did this program fall? So it gives you an idea of, when you're looking at it, obviously, if, it shows you that having a high mandate score is going to mean more than likely you may also have a higher overall score.
I was just, so number 11 is federal and state, and then page 12 is city charter.
City charter, regulatory agency standards.
I got it, thank you.
So then taking you to the chart on page 13, those are the programs, now, this is a level two mandate, which is programs required by a code, ordinance, resolution. two mandate, which is programs required by code, ordinance, resolution, a policy or a franchise or contractual agreement. So we have 148 programs there. So you see we have a lot more programs as we move further down here, but they're budgeted at $24.9 million. That's 38% of the city's general fund budget. And then again, this is now showing how they're broken out across the quartiles for their total overall program scores. And we have 50 of them that are in quartile one for $12.2 million, 45 in quartile two for $8.7 million, 42 in quartile three for $3 million, and 11 in quartile four for $814,000. And you want, you want to have, to have more on top than below.
Councilmember Santos?
Mayor Coombs, Jim, I get that I'm following the RAD, but in here it also says that you're showing on your, in the council communication on page five of the overall reports and mandates. And I see where it says 38% of the general fund budget in the, in that handout.
Right.
But is there a way to put that also in on the RAD?
Yeah, so...
Because I do see that on that one on page eight, it shows that that one for...
We'll look on page 13 because eight would be the citywide numbers.
I'm looking at the citywide numbers now, so just look at 13. So it, does it show?
It shows, so if you look on page 13, you'll see on the far right bottom, it says there's 148 programs.
No, I got that, but it also says that it's 13.58% of the total city budget. I guess my question is, is there a way to put on there that it's, unless I'm missing it somewhere?
Are you looking at the new one?
I'm looking at, I guess I'm looking at the old one.
Yeah, you gotta look at the new one.
We got several, we got several of these, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, but...
Things change and I get it, so if I'm looking at the wrong one...
That's the same problem we have up here. We didn't change it on here, but...
No, it's okay. I'm just making sure that we all got the same material. And I do see now that it's 38.04%.
Right.
So...
We just kind of put in the budget.
My mistake looking at the wrong, I got the right page but looking at the wrong handout.
You know, I'm giving you so much data here. I certainly understand it's hard to follow this.
But no, but the way that you're explaining it is perfect, that one, two, you know, the four through zero and then the, each quartile, you know, it's understandable. It's just I was on the wrong page.
Okay, great, great. So that was, that was... Mandate level two on page 13. Then we got mandate level one on page 14. That's the programs recommended to meet published standards or a best practice. We have 205 of those programs, it's budgeted $21.5 million of the general fund budget. It's 32.9% of the general fund's budget. And again, if you go to that RAD tool presentation on page 14, you can see the number of programs broken down by the four quartiles. 33 programs in quartile one for $4.6 million, 69 in quartile two for $9.1 million, 85 in the third quartile for almost $7 million, and 18 in the fourth quartile for $783,000. And then the last snapshot is on page 15. These are the programs with no mandate or requirement and we have 80 of those programs and they are for a total budget of $7 million, which is 10.8% of the general fund's budget. And I'm not going to read those all to you, but you could follow that and you get the sense of where we're going on that. So as I noted in the update, there's a 54% of the general fund's programs and 43.7% of the general fund budget are for programs that are either to meet standards or best practices or that have no mandate altogether versus the, so those are the ones and the zeros on the mandates. Questions before I move off of those RAD tool snapshots?
So... Councilmember Moore?
So Jim, how is this going to help us moving forward in developing next year's budget?
So again, maybe I can, maybe we could finish the information that I'm giving you tonight and then we can talk about where we're going to go with that. How's that sound? Or if I, man, what we're trying to do is to give you enough information on individual programs where if you are going to be asking the question of, is this a program that we want to continue to do or continue to put more resources into? You are going to have hopefully enough information on how each of these programs influence these important attributes and results so that you can be able to identify whether or not you think these are programs you need to put more resources into or not, or less resources. Now, I, you know, it's too early for me to sit here and tell you what next year's budget's going to look like and I don't know how much we would want to try to accomplish in reducing the budget reset, but if for some reason we couldn't do that through normal means, we would probably want to look at prioritizing programs and saying, are these programs we should still be in the business of doing? So can't answer that question whether it's really going to help us in the '16 budget process to actually make a program elimination, but if we have to make program eliminations or reductions, this would help us. Now in reverse, when we add resources, we look at our requests the same way. We are looking at the program, seeing where it scores, and identifying whether or not, is it a high quartile program or not? Because we may not want to be putting more resources into a fourth quartile level program or even maybe possibly a third. We'd like to steer more of our resources into the first and second level programs. Okay?
Yeah, I was going to ask you a question on page four, the first graph with the yellow and green and we talked about the power and communications, you know, has a big budget of $57.16 million and that's basically the, quite a bit of that is the cost of electricity. But doesn't the rate payer pay the retail? I mean, isn't that embedded in the user's cost anyway? So why do we really care about that as a, because it's the rate payer that's paying that anyway?
Well, Mayor Coombs, members of council, we have not excluded any programs in this process. And so there are a number of programs that like power and communications and electric fees, they do have a revenue in place that supports it and pays for itself. And so that is actually one of the attributes that we'll be visiting in the coming weeks is cost recovery. And so they would, it gets a higher score as a result of that. So not only does it get a high score because it's got a high mandate, it also, it probably, it also has a high portion of the community served. So those type of programs, it reassures us that we're doing something that we should be in the business of doing.
Right.
But they also have programs that are also paid for entirely by rates, but they fall in the fourth quartile.
Okay.
So that may put you in a position of asking, do I want, do we still need to do this? Because that would reduce the rates if you didn't do it.
Okay.
So...
And I think, to answer both questions, one of the things when we go into the budget reviews, this is going, this is a tool that we used last year, but we're really going to engage in it this year. And so a lot of the new requests that come in, we're going to plug them into this system. But as an example, and I'm just using this because it was mentioned tonight, but in terms of solar gardening and what that would cost, that actually would be something that if council wanted us to consider this, we would put it into this formula. And it would show up based on how we rank all of these pieces based on all the criteria and we would see it fall into one of these categories. And then that's actually where you take that raw data and then you make the value decision based on how it fits into the priorities of the organization and where the, and really where it fits and do we want to fund it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay then, move on? So after those snapshots end on page 15, beginning on page 16 all the way through the end of this report, which is through page 57, what we've done is included the individual program level detail. So actually, we have a list, we actually have two lists in there and they're all 1,244 programs and how they individually score against this mandate attribute. Now lucky for us, there's nothing else on the agenda tonight, so I can take you through each and every one of these one by one. And then you will throw me out of here...
Line item by line item.
But so I wanted to, but I think this is critical. This is where we, I want you to at least understand what we're giving you here because when you are wanting to ask the question or find out about information about a program, this is the beginning of getting the data where you can find it. The detail that we've included on these lists includes the department and division, the program cost, and the funding source. And then we also put the number of program FTE related to it. So on top of that, we also include the quartile group for the program that is based on the overall program score. So what you're, what you see then is where it scores on the mandate as well as where it scores on its overall score. So there's two lists in here. And the first list is the general fund programs. That begins on page 16. The second list is all of the other fund programs. And, you know, we do this because we have such a general fund focus with our budget sometimes. We can sort this any way we want, but this is how we've chosen to present it. The second list begins on page 34. Now the way the programs are sorted on these lists are first by the mandate level. So if you look on page 16, which is the first page, you'll see that on the far left column, the mandate to provide the program is the federal state, which is the highest mandate. It's the four mandate. So we've got them sorted first by the highest mandate to the lowest mandate. Then within that, within mandate four, we have them sorted by department and division. So you see, and that's done alphabetically. So what you see here is beginning with finance dash accounting, so it's department and division. And from there, we go to the quartile group and we show the programs based on the highest quartile to the lowest quartile. So in finance and accounting, we have three programs shown there, one in quartile three, one in quartile two, one in quartile one. We can sort this a lot of different ways. This is what Theresa and I decided might be the best way, but if you think there's a better way you'd like to see it, we can always rerun these things and we can give you electronic versions of that type of detail. But I thought this might be the best way to look at it. So questions on any of that?
Councilmember Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have any questions, but the, it's actually an awesome tool. You know, the, basically what you've provided us is a way to systematically look at how we're spending our money. And then, so what's immediately coming to my mind is, alright, so by the way, next time, we can all see, like I can see myself talking on TV now on the little TV here and that's really distracting. Like on a scale from one to 10, it's like an 11. So that's gotta, that's gotta go. Because I can move my hands and it's distracting. But anyway, the, that's the first time that's ever happened. Anyway, so what was I talking about? What I was planning on telling you was, no, so the reality is, this is a great tool because what happens is, we're now allowed to look at, you know, what the federal government makes us do, what the state makes us do, what our charter makes us do, what our ordinances make us do, and then we're, then we're left over with a bunch of, I mean, best practices. And then finally, things that we don't have to do. So naturally you think, well, let's start looking at those. However, the other thing that we should look at are the things that, well, maybe there are ordinances that need to change. Maybe we're continuing to do things that, you know, we put in place a long time and go that we should stop doing. So I mean, I think it's an awesome tool. I don't have any questions, but it'll be, it'll be, I'm going to read this over pancakes in the morning for the next couple of minutes.
So I have a few more comments and then I could finish up and take any other questions or direction.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So how do we communicate this to the public? This is how we, how we actually managed to do our budgeting without getting a million questions, 500,000 instead of a million?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I've never gotten 500,000 questions on our budget. It would be interesting. We got more questions tonight on our budget than we usually get during our budget process. So, but I want, what I can, what we want to do is, we want to talk about the availability of this type of information. I don't know if that goes towards what you're getting at, but I think, and you can move to the next slide, Theresa, but, and maybe let, I'll jump straight to that. Well, let's start with the program definitions and then we'll get to the access. We want to make sure that you have definitions. It's not included in here currently. You notice you got program names, 1,244 of them. Well, we will be providing you with a list, complete list of the program definitions. We'll probably do something like that electronically for you. We just started that today or yesterday and didn't have the, and certainly didn't want to throw that in the packet and never will, but we will give you the ability to have access to that. Because you may look at this and go, well, what is this even about and what does it mean? Same thing for the community. We want to get the same type of data that you're seeing here available to the community as well. When we were, when we were meeting with consultants last June, you recall there was certainly a desire to have the ability for the public to get on the RAD tool and to see this type of data. And that, we did talk to the consultants about that and they've gotten that request in a number, from a number of different entities and they actually have been working since that time to put together the ability to do this online. And actually, we just contacted them this week to get an update and they said, we just rolled out the first tool to the first entity and we'd be glad to talk to you. So we are pursuing that. We're going to see about the viability of using that, usefulness, what's going to be included with it. We don't know just yet what it is and what the related costs are, but we will be looking into that very soon. And if it makes sense for Longmont, then we will try to have that RAD tool access online. Whether we can do that or not, we do think that the data availability can be, can be made available, just like we have for you tonight, to anyone else. And this type of data could certainly be linked to our webpage. These are all just Excel worksheets anyway, large worksheets, but we can get that data in there and we think it gives the public the same type of information that you're saying tonight is very valuable for you. I think we'd like to make that available to anyone who wants to, you know, do something besides go through a budget book that just has a bunch of line items. They can see this data about, you know, how much dollars, how much FTE, where these programs all rank related to each of these individual programs. We will be shooting to try to get that up on our webpage soon. It's really just a matter of sorting and creating these worksheets and we're just prioritizing that internally against other things that we're doing right now. But we should be able to get that up here in, within a few months if not less. So the dashboard tools are interesting. They are not as useful, I think, to trying to actually analyze an individual program. You can't see an individual program on the dashboard. It's summing things up. It gives you a better idea of what's going on with the city and how much of its dollars are being spent, let's say, in these quartiles or on these type, with these type of mandates and such. But if you're going to make decisions, you're going to come down to the program level. And so I think that ultimately, for us data logs, that's really what people are going to want to look at if they want to get down to talking about what we do and what it takes and what it costs. So finally, we were planning to bring, my first goal was, I wanted to see how this first one went and then I was going to begin to put them on your study session agendas every other week until we get through all 13 of them. And we were looking through the calendar yesterday and we said, well, you know, that's almost going to take us into the next budget process itself and that's too long. What we're going to do accelerate that, now that we've created the format that we're using, we think in these presentations, we don't need to go through the whole process that's got us here, but what we can do is, if you want these type of presentations to continue, we will take you through the data for each attribute and result at the... continue, we will take you through the data for each attribute and result at this broad level, as we did tonight, and we can get through that fairly fast. I think tonight's probably been, you know, not too long, and I think we can do more than one per meeting. Our goal is to do that and accomplish that before the staff begins putting together its proposed budget for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Couple reasons why. This data, and I should have pointed it out at the beginning, this is all two thousand and fourteen data. This is all based on the two thousand and fourteen budget. Now that we have a budget for fifteen, we need to turn around and put that into this Rad Tool. We need to make sure we rescore our programs if any of these results are act... Not the act... Well, actually, even the attributes, we will talk about that with you. If any of these change, we may change our scoring for two thousand and sixteen as well. We want to do that sometime in the second quarter of this year. So, our goal is to accomplish all of these. We'll be somewhat aggressive, bringing you two or three a meeting or something if necessary, so that we can get that done in time for our staff to be able to do any additional scoring, which we did last... Had done by last... Through last May, and we really do believe we need to accomplish through this May as well, in order to stay on our timeline. That's all I had. I would be interested in any direction you have on how you would like to see this in upcoming meetings.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Jim, I think it's how you've presented it is actually really good. It also keeps... I mean, we've seen this before. Residents and other interested parties haven't, but I think to do it at an accelerated rate keeps it, one, fresh in our minds. I mean, reading it over, and I read the right one, I just had the wrong one pulled up, but reading it over, it, you know, refreshed the memory of, this is what we did back in June of last year, and then... But to have that consistent refresher for the seven of us and everyone else that, you know, residents and whoever, to see it constantly, you know, three might be pushing it, two might be...
I would be.
Might be, well, but even if... I'm looking at Harold, but even if we could just attach it if there's a light regular session agenda in general business.
Right.
Or even in city manager comments, or something of that nature, before we get into the nitty-gritty of a full-on meeting. Just a thought. But I think what... How you presented it, how you guys presented it, you and Teresa have done a really good job, and, one, refreshing our memories, but, two, to try to explain exactly what's what.
Thanks.
Do you ever have total agreement or disagreements about what quartile group things are? I mean, some things could be kind of in between.
Great question, Mayor Coombs. Actually, so, last year, when we went through the scoring process, we asked each of the departments to score it themselves, and then we had a peer-review group that scored it. So, outside, people from outside, well, not totally outside of the department, because every program is involved here, so there was some overlap. But there were differences, and in fact, the data that we can and have, and will provide, and probably put online, will show, here's what the score was by the department, here's what the score was by the peer-review team. We used a smaller group of a couple of folks that worked with Teresa and I, that we took from the departments, and where there were differences, we reviewed them ourselves, and I do believe we went with the peer-reviewed score almost exclusively. But, so, there might have been a few differences, if there was some factual differences we found out. But, so, yes, there are different... There are definitely differences in scores, and we resolved them to the best of our ability. And we think the peer-reviewed process worked pretty good.
Okay.
And to give you an example, so Eugene and I, actually, we scored the mandates. We were the review. And so, in some cases, you would see a department, and I'll just pull fire out, because it's an easier one, and they... So, they said fire services, what did they say, required by charter? And then they would say tech rescue required by charter. It wasn't technically required by charter, and they were grabbing it under this heading of fire services. And so, we would go in and literally parcel these pieces out based on, is that what was specifically required by charter or best practices? And then say, no, it's really this. And I think that's a good example of how that process was carried out in all the groups.
Councilmember Finley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, Jim, is there any functionality in this tool to be able to track year-over-year changes to the priorities based on by department or by program, I guess is a better way to say that? And if there is, are we planning on using it?
Year-over-year changes in priorities for the departments?
The programs.
So, I'm trying to understand the question, actually, because...
So, if a program's score might change from one year to the next? Is that what you mean? Yes, or if a program shifts from priority two to a priority three?
Certainly would be able to track those differences and report them. I don't know the tool itself. Right. Yeah, right. But, you know, every time there's a good idea, they... We take it back to the consultants, and, you know, they try to make modification if they like it, so.
I was just trying to suggest that it might be nice to know how we track year-over-year.
Right.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think this is great. I think what would make it useful, especially to the public online, would be where we group things together into one category on one line here. If you could have a dropdown, so you can see the breakout of the programs that are included.
So, Mayor Coombs, members of council, I guess what I was envisioning was not the summary information so much as giving the twelve hundred and forty-four program detail information, so that... So, what you're talking about is using the summary information and breaking it down? Whoa. That wouldn't happen to be up within a couple of months.
That's fine. I just... I would find it helpful, because on a couple of these, you know, there's two hundred and some thousand dollars into some kind of community programs. I'd like to see what those are, just to know, so others might find it helpful as well.
And you can see that information on these two large lists, and since they're sorted the way they are, you will be able to go and see them by department, because they don't show by department on the summary that you're talking about, but...
Okay.
But from a dropdown viewpoint, that's not even... Yeah, I don't even know. That's not on our radar.
Yeah, there was one I was looking... One I was looking through here that was quartile four, and it was a very general heading, program name, that clearly was more than one program.
Oh, so, I understand what you're getting at now.
Yeah.
So, I think by getting the program definitions tied to this, so what we were going to do in the next update that you had, and what we decided yesterday, and just will be adding to the rest, is to put the program number, so that you can use that program number when you go to the list of definitions that we will also be giving you to access, and then you can always go back and look at the definition of the programs. Nothing rolls up into these twelve hundred and forty-four. These are all at the individual level, but you'll be able to have that description that might help you understand it better.
Yeah, it might, like, on page thirty-three, it says downtown services. You know, I don't know what those are.
Right, and so you want to see the definition, exactly. And we're going to get you there.
Okay, thank you.
So, you will have that for the next meeting.
Councilmember Finley?
Yes, I think that's a very good idea, too, because that list will be... Won't change, but it doesn't really belong in a spreadsheet, so... And you don't have to update that every year, so... I think this is really a good tool, because I think a lot of people sort of, regular citizens think the city provides maybe twenty or thirty services, and this gives people a... It's a really good tool, I mean, especially for us. I had no idea before we come in, getting on city council, that there were twelve hundred and forty-four programs, and it gives people an understanding of how complicated trying to balance these and figure out how to fund things, whether to fund things, how to balance... How people, you know, how these get balanced out. And so, I think it'll be a really useful tool for us on city council, and also the public when it gets posted. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It is on page twenty-six, best practice, non-departmental, non-departmental, citywide projects support, and it's two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, that could be anything.
Right, and that program description, and we're really sorry we did not think of this before.
That just doesn't mean a whole lot to me.
That... Sandy could probably possibly take a shot at that. You know, one thing I said to Teresa is, there's no way we're going to be able to answer questions off the cuff, but we're going to give you a shot at it.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. That is the cable trust contract in most cases. That is a citywide program that the city funds that is in the non-departmental budget, and that is representative of the franchise fee that we give them. You're welcome.
Good one, but I think it's more than that. I think it's a little more than that, because the franchise is less than that. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's mostly the franchise, but there's other... And so, when you get the definitions, you'll see what it is, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks very much.
All right. I guess it's time now for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We must have our business of the week. My business of the week this week is Fabulous Finds. Several ladies that ride the bus with me in the morning to Denver talk about this place all the time. It's six hundred South Airport Road. They both buy and sell clothing and jewelry and items there, and they find it quite a wonderful place to do a little shopping. So, go try Fabulous Finds at six hundred South Airport Road.
Okay, now it's time for city manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.